mixed feelings of hope and fear for those that were lost, missing, gone. I remember the love of country, the patriotism felt for months, years after the attacks. Unfortunately, I also remember the hate and misunderstanding of a people and of their faith. But most importantly, I remember the resolve to love one another then and today 22 years later. Today, we remember those lost on those plains, in the buildings, a field in Pennsylvania, and those soldiers lost on the battlefield in the calling to service and freedom. As former President George W. Bush said that evening years ago, "And I pray that they will be comforted by a greater power than any of us," spoken through the ages in Psalm 23. "Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I fear no evil, for you are with me." At this moment, I'll ask for a moment of silence for those lost and those that still grieve. Thank you.
We do have several minutes to approve before we have a very special presentation tonight. The first being June 22nd. Any comments or questions? I'm sorry, June 12th. Thank you. Make a motion. Second.
To approve the 12, the June 12th minutes, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Magraine Shakie.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
June 26th, which was another regular scheduled council meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
To approve, June 26th, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Magraine Shakie.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Special meeting minutes from August 1st.
Motion approved.
Second.
To approve, August 1st, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Magraine Shakie.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
And finally, August 14th, which was another special meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve, August 14th, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Magraine Shakie.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
And now I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Van Kirk.
Thank you. Yes, we have a.
We have a special group of young men with us here tonight. This is the 10U Hurricanes baseball team from the city of Brooklyn. So guys, if you kind of want to come on up here, turn around and face the audience. We'll sit up here. I'll come down and meet you in a second, and I'm going to turn it over to our Rec Commissioner, Mr. Abruzzi.
Okay, my guess is that it's been a very long time since a rec sports team has been up here to receive a proclamation at council. I know there's been several Brooklyn High School sports teams and individual athletes that have come up here and gotten accolades and recognition, but you boys should be proud. You know, you guys are one of the few rec teams that's been up here in a very long time to receive a proclamation, so good job so far. These boys played in the Southwest Suburban Recreation Collaborative Baseball League. And for those of you that may or may not know, rec leagues nowadays are not like they were in the past. You know, we play against other cities. It's a competitive league more so than it was in the past. There's about a dozen cities in our league. They travel, they played away games, they played home games, so it's a full-fledged baseball league. It's not just playing other kids from Brooklyn, so even more of an accomplishment. You know, we definitely wanted to paint that picture, even more of a big deal for these boys. I followed their games all year, talked to some of the parents, to the coaches, and they didn't have many close games this year, in a good way. They run ruled a lot of teams. They didn't give up a lot of runs either, so which means they had good hitting, they had good defense, and they had good pitching. So they were overall a really good team. They beat a lot of teams pretty good this year throughout the season, which definitely, you know, testifies to their work ethic and the time they put in throughout practices and the games altogether. So the 10U Brooklyn Hurricanes Boys Baseball Team, they won the league championship for the 2023 Southwest Suburban Youth Recreation Travel League. They finished the regular season 7-0, and overall, they finished 9-0, including two tournament wins. The Hurricanes defeated North Olmsted Swensons in the championship game played on July 17th at Brooklyn Memorial Field. So it was kind of cool that we had the championship game here in Brooklyn as well. So on behalf of the Recreation Department and everybody with the city, you know, we definitely congratulate you, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Abruzzi, and these guys are a lot of fun. It was a joy coaching them this year, and I want to thank Matt as well as Pete that helped me coach these guys. And I told them at the end of the season, every single game, they improved, every single one of them improved throughout the year, and so looking forward to great things for Brooklyn baseball moving forward. So I'm going to read the proclamation. It says this, "Whereas the Brooklyn Hurricanes 10U baseball team finished the season with a record of 7-0, an overall record of 9-0, whereas the team defeated North Olmsted Swensons with a score of 6-2 in the July 17 championship game played at Brooklyn Memorial Field. Our city is proud of the fine representation of sportsmanship, character, and leadership that these young men displayed, and the following team members and coaches made our community proud with an exciting season and displayed superior camaraderie, spirit, hard work, and determination that it takes to make a champion. Ben Bundy, Blake Cartt, Kevin Castro, Toby Folger, Evan Ritz, Parker Kripix, Jonathan Parrish, Mason Pointer, Rainey Reyes, Zamir Reyes, Rademus, Samuel Santana, Yariel Torres, Tanner Van Kirk, and Gabriel Velez." Let's give them one more round of applause. And you guys are welcome to stay, but if you want to go, you can go. That is very cool that they also then even got their own little things. That's very nice. Hey, Victor. How are you doing? Good. Always good seeing you. You, seeing you here and there and there. I can go without her.
Turn your mic and phone off. Kevin?
I'm listening on, see, even without it, everyone's going to hear me.
I know. When you're talking, she turns it on. Yes, you have to touch it to talk. That's to talk.
I keep turning it on and off, yeah.
What, can we turn it back on?
Okay. At this time, we will have the first public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to an item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Now? Okay. No worries. Actually, I was, my, my speaking points today were more for mayor, but council as well, and at the committee of the whole.
If you wait just one second, he is coming back in.
Oh, okay. Stop the clock. That's okay. So, good evening and welcome back. I wanted to discuss the Resolution 2023-21. However, at the Committee of the Whole, I understand that the Memphis Avenue-Tideman Road Diet is no longer going to be part of the request for Public Works, the loan and funding. However, I do have a couple other things that I'm curious or wanting some more clarification on. Mayor did hold a community meeting last Wednesday, and as you know, I did ask a question regarding the study and the cost, which was in the probable cost in the 204-page report. It was indicated that it was $1,994, $1,994, $572. Mayor, you did say that that was not necessarily the actual cost, if not mistaken, because the engineers had not yet completed the drawings. But upon further review, and here's where I'm a little confused and I'm asking for help for clarification, under the section of pavement and the section of signalization, the totals on the probable cost don't add up to what is in the columns. It's 80, there's an $84,000 difference under the pavement and a $75,000 difference under signalization. So that would total, it would add another $159,000 to the probable costs. So that's part of my question, if you can maybe give some clarification as to why or if that was an error or how that all works, because if you add that additional $159,000, it would bring the probable cost up to two, over $2 million. Being that you're not going to ask for financial assistance at this time, will the project, are you still working on this project? Do you have an estimated cost? And if and when you do ask for funding, will it be based on what the actual costs from the drawings from the engineers are? In addition to, I know that there was still discussion regarding the planters that are not part of this probable cost, would those also be added into any total that you would be asking for funding from the loans and funds from the Ohio Public Works, if you're still going to go that route? Those are, those are just some questions that I have. It does, it's a big project. It's in my area as well as many residents, you know, they all traveled up and down Memphis, and it seems like it's quite expensive. So when we, when we ask for this loan or funding, are we going to have specific costs? And will we ask for that total amount or how much of that? Like, how does it, how does that all work? If you could clarify and, and explain that. I just, I don't fully understand. If we ask for not enough, then would, would the city offset those costs? If we ask for too much, then do those funds roll into the capital improvement? Those are kind of the things that I'm looking for guidance and clarification.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else for public session pertaining to an item on the agenda at this time?
Have you recognized?
Yes.
Is it okay if I just answer the question now?
Please, thank you.
I don't have that document in front of me that you're referring to. That was a 2021 study that was done by GPD that you're referring to. It is rather lengthy. I've read through it a couple of times. Those costs in there are just that, they're estimated, estimated costs. As far as a difference in the, the numbers on there, like I said, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll be happy to look at it. So how this will work is, the reason why this is even on the agenda is this is something that we do, council does a five-year capital improvement plan, Mr. Ragus does it, council goes over it. You have to look far in advance. This is, the Memphis Road Diet was on for 2024. This year, it was approved for 2023 to do that. And so we will not know those costs, as I mentioned when you asked that question last week, we will not know those costs until we get the final engineer drawings and then until it goes out to bid. So we will get an estimated cost that we will budget for this project. Council obviously will have to approve that budget if they want to move forward with it, then that project will, as with all projects, will go out to bid, and then we will have the actual cost from that. In regards to what is all involved with that, that is to be determined by the engineer study, which I also mentioned when we spoke before. So I can't speak to exactly what's going to be in there because we just don't have that, that, that's, we're not at that point yet. So once that's done, once we have that information, then we'll make the determination with council whether we move forward with the project or not. As far as the OPWC funding that you alluded to, we originally were going to go out for OPWC funding through the state, but our engineers scored the project, did not score high enough to even attempt to go for those funds for that, so we will not be using that funding source. If we were, it's a hybrid of 0% loan and grants, and so, which is what we are doing for the water line replacement on Southwoods, a 10% grant, 90% loan, 0% over 20 years. But we will not be using that funding source for a potential Memphis Road Diet. I believe that answers all your questions, and please, if you have any more, please feel free to give me a call.
We will now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will start this evening with the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Trick or Treat at Brooklyn Safety Town will be held on October 26th from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Wear your Halloween costume and bring your trick-or-treat bags for some good treats. Registration is required at www.
Next up, we have the Public Safety and Environmental Committee, Councilwoman Sue Groddick.
Thank you. Just a brief reminder mostly. With last month's stormy weather as our reminder, residents are encouraged to check their registration for NotifyMe, which is the city's system for alerting residents about many things, including emergencies. To increase resident participation, directions will be repeated in our city newsletter again. I also will reach out to the principals of our schools and ask that each include in their electronic newsletters directions for parents to sign up for the ready note, for the notify me. Also, recently, Ms. Whitey and I were discussing the idea of having parents register their children's cell phones, too. You know, as time goes by, more and more and younger and younger of our children have cell phones. So Ms. Whitey had brought up the idea, and I thought it was a good one, and I would include that suggestion to both principals to encourage parents to register their children's cell phones also. Also, anyone who is watching this meeting can go to the city's website, type notify me right in the search, and you can follow the directions there. So if you're not sure that if you're registered or you are sure you're not registered, you could go ahead. I checked my own last night, and while I was there, I added my husband's. In addition to the notify system, this is also a reminder for residents who do not have a cell phone, you can request one of the weather radios free of charge to the fire department. I know of around 30 residents who have already gotten those radios through this program. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Next, we have the Domestic Abuse Commission report. I do want to thank everyone, both committee members and residents who helped contribute to our letter-writing campaign early on this summer. I was able to send several dozen letters, cards, to a nursing home in Ohio via Letters Against Isolation as a way to recognize World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, which is celebrated, recognized annually in June. Next, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission reports, Councilwoman Groddick.
The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting on September 21st, and there are three items on their agenda. There's a variance request for a 140-square-foot accessory structure for the side yard at 9008 Pepper Ridge Drive, a variance request to allow a fence to be installed past the rear building at 4592 Winter Lane, and a variance request to allow a fence to be installed past the rear building line at 4672 Winter Lane. That meeting again is on September 21st. And going back over the summer, the Planning Commission had two meetings. The most recent one was August 23rd. The commission met to approve the final site plan of Dunkin' Donuts. They will be increasing their check line for their drive-through, which will be a relief for people who are waiting for their coffee and also the residents in the area. And the commission also met on July 11th to approve a lot split at 7619 Memphis Avenue. Right now, the next scheduled meeting is October 4th at 6:00 p.m., if needed. And that concludes those reports. Thank you.
Next up, we have the School Board Liaison, Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. This past Tuesday, the board met in the Treasurer's Conference Room. The main topic of that meeting was a discussion of a bond issue that is being aimed to be a part of the 2024 March primary. The bond issue would be to raise funds for planned physical improvements to the school. Overly, I liked the discussion that took place, and there was a lot of positive dialogue on how to prepare a bond issue that the residents could see supporting in March. Please be on the lookout for updates and notices for community involvement at the meetings in the near future. I had good conversations with the School Board Vice Presidents and Presidents, and they asked to make sure that the residents knew that they are really wanting the community's involvements in this. I'd like to also say good luck to both Mr. Signer and his retirement, and Mr. Hazaruni on his appointment to the board. The next meeting will take place September 19th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And finally, this evening, we have the Committee of the Whole. As always, the Council Committee of the Whole met tonight at 6:15, as we do prior to regularly scheduled council meetings. We did have a guest from Banky Landscape Architects attend this meeting so council could ask additional questions about the Memorial Park Master Plan, which was presented to us and is available on YouTube from back in April. Additionally, we did talk about all of tonight's legislation, and the items that were requested to be adopted tonight through suspension of the rules were recommended adoption by council. I will go over details of each legislation as they're read into the record. And that concludes our committees, commissions, and boards reports. We now have reports of council. We'll begin this evening with Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome and congratulations to the 10-and-under Hurricanes and their families. We're very proud of their accomplishments and dedication. Keep up the good work. This year, National Voter Registration Day is on September 19th in Ohio. The deadline to either register or change your information with the Board of Elections for the general election is October 10th. Forms are available here at City Hall and also at the library. And I know at the library, you can also turn them in, and they do submit them to the Board of Elections. Are we, Mary Jo, are we good on the 7th or the 18th for the public meeting on, for the park?
I have not heard back from everybody if they were doing that, they were available. I heard a couple. I think I had enough, didn't I?
The 18th, everybody.
18th, okay, the 18th.
Okay.
I didn't know what it was.
Okay.
If it was a public thing or.
So we're going to, we're going to have a public meeting on September 18th. I think we were looking at 6:30, and this will be for the public to voice any question or ask any questions, voice any concerns about the draft for Veterans Memorial Park. We did review it again in our Committee of the Whole. It is available on our website, so I would encourage any residents who are interested in the park, if you can't make the meeting, contact one of us with your questions or comments, but this will be a good opportunity for the public to learn a little bit more about it and ask their questions. Today is the 22nd anniversary of the attack of 9/11, and I think for most of us, it had, most of us here, it did have an impact on us, and it's something that we will never forget. Some may not be aware that as of 2020, more people have now died from the toxic exposure than actually who died in the 9/11 attacks. There were 2,974 people who perished on that day, but as of 2020, there were 4,343 survivors and first responders that have died in the years since. For the impacted families, this is always with them. I saw a quote today from a relative who was being interviewed, and he said, "For those of us who lost people that day, the day is still happening. Everyone else moves on, and you find a way to go forward, but that day is always happening for you." I had the opportunity a number of years back to visit the 9/11 memorial and the museum, and there's a quote from Virgil that's in big letters right across the wall, and it really resonated with me. And the quote is, "No day shall erase you from the memory of time." And I would encourage everyone, if you get the opportunity to go to the memorial in New York City and the museum, it's really hard to describe, and it's really something that you have to experience in person. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. Over the summer, I was given opportunities to help residents with concerns such as hornet nests and trees that hung over public property, tree issues, snow shoveling signup support, and I also met with states and local leaders and conversed on issues such as taxes, road issues, and election issues, and business opportunities in our city. I also had conversations with both Jeremy and Tom about dealings in the city, especially when it came to businesses coming and going. I was also able to attend the open house for the new senior, for the new city center that we're in right now, that saw many residents being invited to it. And multiple times, I was stopped by Gideon and Josiah's lemonade stand in support of our local first responders. Speaking of our first responders in military, this upcoming Friday, hopefully, the mayor, council candidate Matt Mosley, and myself and students from around Brooklyn will be painting the fire hydrants at the Timothy Knight Commons and by the new Blue Star Memorial location with the plane in red, white, and blue colors. I'd like to say thank you to all those involved in planning and participating. Thank you to Mr. Verba on the supplies. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Calaris, as well as the School Board Vice President, Bonnie Barcheck, on liking the idea and working with me on these issues. I think it was a wonderful opportunity to get the community and the schools involved with one another, and this weekend is the last. And this weekend is the last weekend for the kiddie park on Memphis Road, weather permitting. The family and I went multiple times this year with Leo, as well as my father-in-law, to the events also, as well as the music in the park and the start of the football season. And following Ms. Poochie speaking on the election, this November, our community, the voters in our city, will hit the ballot box on the ballots that we will be receiving or voting on in person will be, if I am correct, Issue 30, which is a vote on raising the requirements of the residency from three years at the moment to five. With a bit of research of 54 cities out of 57 in Cuyahoga County, at the current requirements, we are in the top 13% most restrictive at three years, meaning there are 87% less restrictive cities in our county. With Issue 30, we would be, if it passed, in the top percentiles of restrictions in all of Cuyahoga County. How is this moving Brooklyn truly forward together by leaving quality candidates behind? And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone had an enjoyable summer break, and welcome back to all city council members and residents. We'd like to thank Mayor Ron Van Kirk for his quick response regarding an issue on Brookwood Drive with the concrete and all other areas that residents had complaints. And we'd like to welcome Ryan Paul Ronaldo Monroy to the police department. Congratulations to the Brooklyn Hurricanes 10U baseball team on being the 2023 SWS Youth Recreation Travel League champions. Also, congratulations to the 15U softball team who made it to the championship game, finishing with the best overall record in the regular season. Thanks for making the city of Brooklyn proud. This year's Community Fall Fest, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, city and school will be held on Saturday, September 23rd, kickoff parade at 1:00 PM. Food trucks, beverage garden, live music, Kids Zone, inflatables, games, face painting, he rides, and more. Fireworks at dusk. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. Probably, as many of you, I was very reflective today, being the anniversary of 9/11. I also have what I consider the honor to discuss it with my students. They are seven and eight years old, so this is something that they didn't experience at all. And as time continues to march on, there are, you know, more and more adults who were either young children or young teenagers during that time. So I just wanted to share a little bit of what I did as a second-grade teacher today. We spent a lot of time reading. We read an informational book about 9/11, but we also read a wonderful historical fiction book about one of the fireboats that was sort of brought out of retirement and ended up helping to fight the fires. And I think it's really important for those that are too young or weren't even born to know what it was like from those of us who lived through it, because this is a unique time in our history, but it's also unique that there are so many of us who remember it and can pass on those lessons. One of the graphics that was in the nonfiction book was a map showing the flights of those four. And as we looked very closely at the map, you may remember the flight that eventually crashed in Pennsylvania was headed towards Hopkins Airport, and the map showed very clearly, and we talked about Cleveland being right by Lake Erie, and how, for a small amount of time during that whole tragedy, we knew that there was something amiss with a plane that was in our area. And, you know, I talked about how everybody has individual memories of that time, and how important it is for us to share the facts, but also the memories, too, that people have of that time. So probably, like you, I spent a lot of time reflecting on what I was doing at that time, which was actually teaching another group of children. It was a few hours before I even knew anything was going on. Maybe you also were in a situation like that. And I think about those children, my own children were in third and fifth grade, and how fortunate I was to be so close to them because I was teaching in our school, but how a little bit of their childhood was taken away on that day, and a little bit of their sense of safety, and also for us as adults, too. So thank you very much, Erin, for sharing your opening comments. I think it brought a tear to a few of our eyes, as memories of 9/11 often do for me. Moving on, I would like to also congratulate the U-10 team. I don't know if you noticed, but I was able to give four special hugs. They were all previous students of mine. So a little extra, I'm proud just to see our team do so well, but a little bit of extra pride as I have a personal connection to four of the players and apparently their coach. I hope you aren't going to apply for the Guardians opening. Apparently, this is a...
No, I think we're good.
Unknown talent we have here in Brooklyn. The last thing I'd like to remind, we've heard a lot of dates thrown out. Well, there is the Brooklyn Schools Rally Back to School. It had to be postponed because of some weather at the beginning of the year, but if you are interested, and all are invited, and we're all fans of our fantastic marching band, so it's an opportunity to watch the marching band. We are meeting at school, around the school, at 6:30 to Parade Down Berwald. If you would like to just meet at the stadium, you can meet around that time. There will be some presentations, a special presentation of the kindergarten class, the incoming kindergarten class. I understand there will be some food and beverages, so I'm thinking maybe the boosters will have the concessions open, but I don't know for sure. And if you would like to, you can remain. They're doing a special Under the Lights rehearsal practice of the marching band in Huracan, and that starts at 8:00. So if you aren't doing anything Wednesday evening, join the many students and teachers at the school and at the stadium. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Goyle.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. I hope everyone had a fantastic summer. Congratulations to the Brooklyn 10U baseball team on their impressive season and championship win. This upcoming weekend, the Historical Society is hosting its annual Shun Pike Shop Saturday from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM and Sunday noon to 3:00. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Brooklyn Middle School, High School Athletic Boosters Flapjack fundraiser at Applebee's. If you have not made it out to an athletic event, I'd highly encourage you to do so. Our student athletes, cheerleaders, and band members would appreciate your cheers and support. Lastly, it's only September, but 2023 is flying by. We have just 57 days until November's general election. There's going to be a lot on the ballot this year, from school board, mayoral, and city council candidate races to our proposed charter review amendments, or charter amendments. These races are very important, and the future of our city depends on who we elect and if we pass the proposed charter amendments. Please be informed and prepared to exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick things. The first is to reiterate what many fellow council members said today. It was a day that forever changed our country, and it's a somber day of reflection, a lot of reflection. And I do just want to say that my heart goes out to anybody who lost somebody due to the events that unfolded 22 years ago. I know Councilwoman Poochie brought up how it's not just from the day of the attack, but continue to lose people due to the events that unfolded that day. So I did just want to say that. And then additionally, it was a fun-filled, packed summer of events and council meetings as well up here in August. But don't worry, the events, city events are not over yet, and the school events, they were many mentioned up here already, but I do just want to reiterate what Councilman Tansky said about Fall Fest. This year, in past years, we've had the picnic in the park by the Chamber of Commerce and the Fall Fest put on by the city. This year, it is one big Fall Fest on September 23rd, and it's put on by the city, the schools, and the Chamber of Commerce. So I do hope to see you there. That ends council reports. I'm going to turn it over at this time to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to say welcome back. It's been a very busy summer here in the city, and I'm going to go over some of the updates. We held, I held four community gatherings at various places around the city. There are several more that will take place over the next couple of months. Everyone's been very well attended, had some very productive times of discussion, interaction, so look forward to seeing many of you at a future event. The joint newsletter with the city and the schools was delivered over the weekend and today, possibly still some tomorrow. So I'm glad to partner with Dr. Calaris and the Brooklyn School Board and the Brooklyn Schools in this endeavor, and so this will be a joint effort that we have moving forward. I want to say congratulations to the 2023 Hall of Fame inductees. They were inducted into the Brooklyn Hall of Fame last week. I was able to attend briefly the meet and greet ceremony prior to that induction, and it was good to see some alumni faces at the meet and greet, and congratulations to those that were inducted into that. Also, I want to say congratulations again to my baseball team. It was a lot of fun this year coaching these guys. They were, it was great. We haven't played since June, and so I miss seeing them, so it was good having them back here. And they talked about you, Mrs. Grodick, several of them did, when they found out that you were on city council here with us. So they're a great, great team. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Abruzzi. He does an excellent job with all the recreation sports here in the city, and he's exactly right that the competition level has improved even from when I was playing this type of baseball when I was a kid. So it was a lot of fun and look forward to seeing many more years to come for Brooklyn sports. Here are some updates for the meeting tonight. Obviously, the demolition of the old building across the street is complete. Panzicca is currently preparing the ground for their build, and I would anticipate construction getting underway here in the next several weeks. They still are on schedule. At least the last time I heard from them to have that library opened up sometime next year in the late summer, early fall. We had a very aggressive citywide roads project. For the local roads, the concrete around the city is mostly completed. They're still pouring some last remaining sections of some sidewalks and aprons on various streets. Once that's complete, they'll return in the next week or so to do final landscaping, restoration, then go over the punch list with our engineer and our service director, Mr. Verba. The asphalt portion in the city is complete. Ridge Road, the project was completed on time. There are still some punch list items remaining, but the traffic flow over there has improved immensely. I believe the county did an excellent job with that road, so it's good to have that opened up. The Brook Park Road construction, the majority of work in Brooklyn is complete. They're currently at the far southeastern side of our city, right there at Ridge Road. They delayed doing this until Ridge Road was open at the request of council, so the two construction zones did not intersect, excuse me, at the request of the city. So the two intersections did not, construction did not intersect with each other. They're supposed to be done, completely done in Brooklyn by the end of this construction season. So this is a two-year project, but the rest of it next year will take place outside of our city. We had budgeted for a turn-only lane from Memphis Avenue onto Tiedemann. However, there had to be some adjustments made to the engineered plans by GPD. The underground utilities had to be located, they were, and they're updating the engineering for this project. It would be anticipated that we would push this to next year. Grade Line has been working on the new Veterans Memorial Plaza across the street next to the airplane. The park is nearing completion. They'll be in later this week to do landscaping, lighting, and irrigation will be the final steps for that. We would anticipate having that park done sometime this month. The shop drawings for the remaining city entryway signs have been approved, and those sign locations have been staked around the city. The installation of those entry signs will be complete by the end of next month. We have finally, after two and a half years, taken ownership of 7476 Memphis Avenue, that we've been trying to purchase this property for over two years. The land bank has put out a bid. There's a clean, it has to be done to clean out that house, and once that's done, the demo will come in and take place, and I would anticipate that demolition taking place late this month into early next month. And so thank you to Mr. Butler and all the work that was done on that. It was a difficult one to get accomplished, but we're glad to see that the end is near. As Mr. Tansky mentioned, we have made conditional offers to three police officers. They have all accepted. Two of them are currently in the police academy. The third one has to pass one more test before being sworn in. We have hired a recreation coordinator for the senior/recreation center. Her name is Katie Tomek. She comes to us from Fairlang with many years of experience, and she actually started today. And so we're grateful to have her on board and looking forward to her success here in the city. We've also hired a part-time clerk, police records coordinator, Rosa, and she started training last week. She's on board with us. We also hired a new law enforcement clerk, Georgina, and she actually started today as well. Mr. Greer and I have been conducting interviews for the housing manager position, and we would anticipate wrapping those interviews up in the coming weeks and would look to make a hire here in those coming weeks as well. The Old Animal Shelter, which sits behind this building, was demolished today. The house should be completely gone by the end of this next week, and that will be landscaped and turned into grass, a grassy area over there, which will lead to the Kingdom Trails. Per the city's request, the county has completed some aesthetic and structural repairs on the maintenance of the county-owned Memphis Bridge west of the service garage. They worked on that with limited lane closures throughout the summer. It's completed, so it looks nice down there. They did a great job. The Norfolk Southern repairs on the entryways to our city on the railroad bridges, the engineering has been complete and put out to bid. Per the railroad, the bid process and contracting takes about a month, so I would anticipate that those went out to bid on August the 14th, so I would anticipate hearing something additional very, very soon. As the council knows, Chief Melkey and myself have been working on formulating a plan to deal with the speeding issues around the city. The primary focus currently is on the streets east of Ridge Road. We're currently gathering data on all of those streets for traffic volume, speeding, times that cars are most active over there. Our engineer is working on a policy for performing traffic calming measures on our city streets. Once we have those things put together, the goal will be to implement some traffic calming measures on those streets to see how successful they are. And if it is successful, we would look to take that plan and to deal with traffic calming around the city. Mr. Abruzzi and myself have met with each director in the city. We've gone over their capital project requests, as well as their staffing requests for next year. Tom and I, right now, are in the process of scoring those projects, and we, of course, will have internal discussions regarding that in preparation for our October 16th Capital Budget Work Session with council. One additional piece of property here in the city, 6121 Vandalia. This house is very familiar to those that live on that side of the city. This house has been condemned by the city since 2018. It's unlivable. It has sold twice at sheriff's sale, actually, three times now. It was actually put up for sheriff's sale today. It sold for $74,000. However, it is not worth even a fraction of that. However, the city does plan to move forward with a notice to proceed to have the property demolished. It is within our legal rights to do so, as it's a nuisance, and that will be abated. Once we have the, in the land bank queue, the property will, the house and the garage will be demolished, and that nuisance will be abated. It's gone back for five years. Mr. Borowski mentioned the three- to five-year residency requirement. I am opposed to this as well. I think that three years is ample time for someone who wants to make Brooklyn a better place, to get acclimated here. Had this been rule put in place when I ran for council 12 years ago, I would have been excluded from running, as I'd only lived in the city for four years at that time. As far as September 11th goes, I think everyone, as was mentioned, will remember where they were. I had just graduated from college and was sitting at my desk at my very first job down in Hudson, Ohio. And the, part of my job was using the internet for doing bankruptcy accusations, and it wouldn't work, like it kept locking up. Of course, back in 2001, we didn't have the high-speed like we have today, and it was because so many people were trying to see what was going on. And I remember when the page on, I think it was CNN or, you know, one of the websites finally came up, and that plane's crashing into that building was the first image that I saw. And of course, then everyone made their way to the conference room to watch it on a very fuzzy, non-digital television, and we watched those buildings collapse. It's something that obviously I'll never forget, and it's, as Mrs. Grodick mentioned, I have a child that's in fourth grade, so very close to that age. Trying to explain it to them is difficult, you know, but I think it's important that we pass that on to the next generation so they never forget. Mrs. Poochie mentioned the memorial in New York City. I've never been able to visit that one, but I have visited the other two, the one in Shanksville, the Flight 93 Memorial. It's the most touching memorial I've ever seen. It's really out of the way there in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, but I would encourage you there off of Route State or US Route 30. They did an outstanding job of that memorial. The most poignant point of that memorial is they actually have recorded phone calls from the old answering machines that people used to have in their homes of loved ones calling from the plane and leaving messages at the homes of their relatives and speaking to them for the last time. It's pretty powerful. So I would encourage you, if you have a chance, to go visit that, as well as the Flight 93 or the memorial that's at the Pentagon as well. It's equally as powerful. Today will certainly never forget.
We, yes?
Mayor question about the house on Vandalia. So even though it's sold today, we're still going to be able to move forward with the condemning it? I mean, I know it's already condemned with the demolition.
Yes, so give a little more detail to that. We have been trying to acquire the home. We actually had it appraised. It appraised for $17,000, which we were prepared at auction to purchase if necessary. It has sold twice at previous auctions. It has sold twice at previous auctions, and then when the buyers found out that it was condemned, they asked the judge to release them from it, and the judge agreed. I'm guessing that what it sold today, it's going to be the exact same thing. I actually contacted the law firm that has the lien, the tax liens on this, and explained exactly what we're doing, and they're on, they can't give me their actual opinion. We basically said, we understand, there's just really nothing that we can do about it. So we did try to go about this for the city to acquire it, but we are within our legal rights to demolish it because it is abating a nuisance. And it was condemned in 2018. If I remember serves me correctly, I believe it was condemned again in September of last year, so.
It was.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We will now move on with new business. Up first tonight, we have Resolution 2023-20, which is on first reading, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer. This is an annual resolution that is necessary to establish our property tax millage rate for the fiscal year 2024. There is no change in the overall millage levied of 5.9 mils and coincides with the tax budget that was recently passed. Resolution 2023-21 is on first reading tonight, but administration is looking for adoption through suspension of the rules, authorizing the mayor to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a potential grant and/or loan for the funding of capital improvement projects in the city of Brooklyn and declaring an emergency. This project that the mayor is applying for assistance includes the Southwood Drive Waterline Project. They are looking for a 10, they are going to apply hopefully for a 10% grant and 90% zero-interest loan over 20 years.
By striking in Section 1, Memphis Avenue, Tiedemann Road, Ridge Road, diet project.
To amend. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules as amended.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
To adopt as amended. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Next, we have Resolution 2023-22. This is on first reading tonight, requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2023 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. This is an annual resolution that is necessary in order to receive advances from tax proceeds for the fiscal year 2024. Resolution 2023-23 is on first reading tonight, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for public health services for the years 2024 and 2025. And this is, for 2024, will be an increase of $7,400 compared to last year. Next up, we have Ordinance 2023-25. This is on first reading, but administration is looking for adoption through suspension of the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with public entities, Pool of Ohio, for the purpose of providing property and casualty insurance for the city of Brooklyn for the coverage period beginning September 25th, 2023, for a total annual cost not to The price increased by approximately $30,000 from last year, both due to the market and the new building that we're sitting in here tonight. Due to the timing of the start of the contract and the need for the Board of Control approval, administration is requesting this passage on first reading.
May be recognized very briefly?
Yes.
Just one minor thing, just the amount was $194,367. Just wanted to make sure we had the correct amount in there.
Thank you.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
And finally, tonight, we have Ordinance 2023-26. This is on first reading, but also looking to suspend the rules and adopt tonight, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2023. This is a result of an increase in the street program of $220,000. Due to the timing of locking in prices, the administration is looking for passage on first reading tonight. Yes.
Will be recognized. Got to remember to push that button. Just to clarify for the record, the $220,000 is accurate. I'd want to break that down. $175,000 of that is for the Brook Park Road, which comes out of our state highway funds, which is the city's portion of the gas tax that we receive here. Can only be used for state highways, and Brook Park Road is one of those. And the rest of them is the, which is a much smaller amount, is for the city's concrete project costs.
Thank you, Mayor. Introduced by all, to suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
To adopt. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
At this time, we will have the second public, public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Hello, Mr. [inaudible 00:34:31]. Eighteen, three years is okay. We're in Brooklyn, we're in the [inaudible 00:35:00]. Blue streetlights, it's good bed, it works. Came home on a Thursday night, looked out at the street. It's lit really bright. This is great. I did the telephone call. Only duck, sidewalk. Want to talk to Andy about this? I feel I'm not, but I'm not totally satisfied. Up my neighbor's front yard. They, I dusted the door in my front yard now, so it's... Go on, Andy, you're off around the city, chucking pickaxe. Not really, all the problem with it. There's a lot of series that... Not spread out as much as the old streetlight. It was probably a third or larger of what happened. About to see things. This is a wall they had. My point is, I think people all out there. Light could be brighter. Last of all these buildings, glass is beautiful. I saw here, I brought it up. Before that, passing in front of the fire department, which is not... That's much more efficient than a [inaudible 00:37:59]. That's natural light. The wall, insulated wall. Something I brought up for quite a few years now. Anything about tar and the cracks behind City Hall where it's all nice. Do you want anything on that? Machine over, tar the crack.
Hey, Kelly. Can you speak into the mic more, just so Mary Jo has a better time with?
Can you speak into the mic more, just so Mary Jo has a better time with... Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for public session?
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Just to answer Ms. Kroll's question about the... There you are. I was looking in the wrong spot. Yes, like I mentioned before, ICP, we are not aware of any plans that they have for building back there. Obviously, it's their property, so they can do what they wish back there. But there's nothing that we're aware of that's been proposed. If something does come up, absolutely, we would notify the residents along back there as well. As far as working with small businesses, we will work with any business that's in Brooklyn. I know that Mr. Rowan has spoken with the ownership of Bedoff Plaza, talking about that very thing, as well as Ridge Park Square. So, yes, we will work with them. Doesn't always work, but we would be happy to work with them. Obviously, if we have these facilities in our city that are here, we want to see them occupied. And so, absolutely. As far as the issue 30, I already spoke for it. I am against it. And I also want to thank Matt for making me feel very old when you said you were two years old back in September 11th. Oh, second grade. Well, I still feel old, but not as old as I was before. And then, as far as issue 30, like I said, I agree as well. I don't think it's necessary. And obviously, I didn't have a vote on that, but I will be voting against it.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
So, you asked about our stand on issue 30. I personally believe that three years is sufficient. That's my personal opinion. And I think the voters will decide. A couple other things is college and military. They typically, unless, for some reason, they register to vote where they're going to school, they typically remain, I'm going to use Brooklyn as an example, remain Brooklyn voters. They vote absentee. And Ms. Kroll mentioning about the small businesses. We do try and provide, when I say assistance, we try and connect them with, there's various programs, especially through the county. You know, I know we've gone through several rounds of storefront renovations and things like that. If you're referring specifically to our job, or CRA, which is the tax abatement, retail is not covered under that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Rowan? Pardon me? Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, that it's not, you know, that we're not interested in helping them. And anything we can do to help them and facilitate them, we do. And I also want to comment what Mr. Ardito said about the lights. I did go out to his house. I think it was about 9:45 when I got there, because it was in the summer. We had to wait for it to get dark. And his street is not the only street. There are definitely dark holes. And I know that Andy had, I talked to Andy about it a bit, and I know that they're still making adjustments, but I just want to make sure that these things don't fall through the cracks, because there are definitely, like, very dark places.
May I be recognized? Yes. You're absolutely right, Mrs. Pucci. And we've actually already started making those corrections. I signed two change orders last week from First Energy to put up lights in two different locations. And so, anytime you have a transition this large, citywide, you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of lights, there's going to be adjustments that have to be made. So, I know Mr. Sellers isn't here, but he has been incredible with this plan, and he will continue to work on those issues as we move forward. So, we're order to have been close to being done.
Thank you.
Does anybody else on council, the mayor, or directors have anything to add? Vic?
St. Elias, I would defer to the building department. So, Mr. Greer, if you want to answer that question?
Yes, at some point, we did look out the window, and we saw that there was a sign right outside my office. Excuse me. Prior to that, we did mandate, or advise someone to, who had a similar-sized sign, to come in and had to apply for variance. So, we felt as though, making sure that everybody followed the proper rules, we reached out and said, "You guys do realize that you do need a sign permit for that?" They were not aware of that, and we made them aware of it. And there was a bit of back and forth. So, I was there throughout most of the conversation and didn't see that it was really a problem.
Make a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Let me just mention on the charter amendments. You had a charter commission that had changes. These changes was approved, whether it was by majority or whether it was overwhelming. You moved from that charter commission to this city council. This city council also approved it. Whether it was by majority or overwhelming doesn't make any difference. You had majority. Moved it to the ballot. The voters have the power now, just like these elected councilwomen and councilmen up here. The voters are intelligent enough to make the decisions whether that charter should be changed or whether any of us should be elected. The power of the people will make the decision whether the residency will be changed. Our votes are minimal compared to what's out there. So, I respect anybody's opinions on it. Let the people out there go to that ballot. My opinion, all of those amendments should have went to the city. I don't know what we're afraid of. Move every one of those charter amendments to the city, and let the people of this city that pay the taxes vote on something they want changed or they don't want changed, just the same as they elect us. The power of the residents and their votes are the ones that count. We could make opinions on anything, which is fine, I'm all for it. But anytime somebody wants to make a change, I don't understand why we don't take it to the ballot. I don't want to hear this, "Well, they look at councilpeople how they do..." No. Residents are intelligent enough, they get it. They get it, just like they get it on the presidential election. They watch TV, they get on the social media. They're being educated. They read the paper. They're being educated. Trust me, they get it. So, this back and forth, "Well, they're going to listen to councilpeople whether it goes..." No, I don't want to hear that. Take it to the residents. Let them make them decisions. I don't care if it's charter amendments, people getting elected, legislation in the state, county, or anywhere else. Let the power of the people have the final say. They're the ones that paying the taxes. They're the ones that paying the salaries. Let them have the final say. That concludes my report.
I'm sure.
Yes, Director Butler.
Do you know, can you hear me okay?
What about the one next to you?
I just want to revisit. Sorry. I'm going to speak very loudly. The zoning code was changed in December of 2022 by an act of council, and it was carried into effect fully in May of 2023 by an act of the voters of the city of Brooklyn. We are now enforcing new sign code regulations. Is that working tough? We're now enforcing new sign code regulations as a result of the new zoning code. And Mr. Greer has the responsibility, of course, relying on the guidance of the administration, including me and the planning director, on what that code is intended to do, particularly the new sections with respect to signage. And so, we've got the ministerial job of, when we spot things that are out of whack with the new regulations on signs, which we studied very carefully and wrote very carefully, we've got to address them, regardless of the longevity of a particular sign that had existed in the city prior to the new zoning code going into effect. So, I want to just encourage council to appreciate that fact. Know that City Hall is not looking out the window deliberately looking for violations. We're just enforcing the new code as we have it before us. And I will tell you that it gives us an opportunity to figure out whether that code needs to be adjusted one day. Because it's so new, and because it's a full zoning code rewrite, we always anticipated that there will be adjustments that we've got to make, based on the kinds of variance requests that come in in the future, whether or not those compound. And so, we'll be back before City Council with some suggested changes as necessary going forward. But right now, we're in the business of enforcing this new code, and we've got to do that. So, there's no personal animus involved. It's just a review of the code, a determination that something may not fit within it, a conversation with the property owner, which is often how these things go, and then a variance request sometimes, or the property owner will decide to take a sign down, make it smaller, or whatever the case may be. All right? I just wanted to let everyone know that, including all of you. Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I have a suggestion for the rec board meeting, since it's that evening, that we just have a joint committee of the whole and rec board meeting, if that's possible. I don't know what time they meet.
We could typically...
Okay.
We typically meet at 7:00. That's when our rec board meeting is. So, if we maybe slide it up to 6:00, the park meeting, I don't know if that would work. Then would that give us a full hour? Then rec board, we can do that, too.
Okay. One of the reasons we were trying for 6:30 is to give residents enough time to get home from work and everything. So, it was just a suggestion about the meeting.
Yeah, we'll discuss the rec board and make a, either move it or change the time.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Barowski. Kevin Tansky. Sue Grodick. Meg Ryan Shaki. Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Thank you.